Any item on the consent calendar they wish pulled? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent calendar and minutes are approved. Nothing pulled from consent calendar. Item number seven, items of interest to the public, public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the planning commission on those, on any item not on our agenda. Realize that the commission cannot take action on information you may bring before us, but we may note it for future action. Please limit your time to three minutes. Anyone in the audience wish to comment? Seeing none, close that item. Written communications on non-agenda items. Do we have any written communications?
We have no written communications, Chair friend.
Thank you. Presentations and educational workshops, we do not have any. That brings us most expeditiously to environmental assessments. First one is item 10.1. This is a site plan review 2307, a change in occupancy, a consideration of a site plan review application within the central business district zone to one completed change in occupancy from professional office to retail and to find the project categorically exempt from SEQA. And I believe Ms. Hunter, you have the staff report?
I do. So SPR 23-07 is a request from the applicant for a change in occupancy from professional office to retail for the structure located at 492 Main Street Kitchen Goods. A SPR is required for a change in occupancy pursuant to zoning ordinance section 10-4-9 C3. The two-story structure is approximately 3,100 square feet and was constructed in 1958. Kitchen Goods was previously located within Creekside Plaza approximately 130 feet from the current location prior to relocation to 492 Main Street. Staff included a brief analysis of the exterior of the structure, highlighting signage, and included photographs of the elevations in attachment three of the staff report. It is the opinion of staff that the proposed change in occupancy is consistent with the purpose, intent, and criteria of zoning ordinance sections 10-4-9 Site Plan Review and 10-5-14 Central Business District Zone. Additionally, the project is consistent with the general plan land use element goal C in that the project retains an existing business that will aid in maintaining the commercial center of downtown Main Street. As such, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the staff report as part of the public record, adopt the findings in support of SPR 23-07, and conditionally approve the project based on the findings included in the staff report and subject to the recommended conditions of approval. This concludes staff's report on 23-07.
Thank you very much. Questions of staff? Commissioner Carter?
Thank you, Chair. Just have a couple of quick questions of staff. In regards to the code violation, I was curious, this is my first site plan review containing a code violation since being appointed, so pardon my ignorance on this. So I don't see any details of the code violation case. Is it, is that normal not to? Because I feel like it would, could possibly help inform our decision here, especially since it looks like our actions here today could cure that code violation case. So is that normal?
Staff typically does not put details regarding the code violation other than we hope to explain that the case for you, in this case a site plan review, would cure that issue. I believe the code violation was installation of signage without a permit and change in occupancy. So, and just as a caveat, I would state that this is typical. We have business owners that are unaware of these requirements, so it's not to begrudge or taint the property owners with any will. This is, this typically happens, and so we just go through, we notify them, and that's why we're here to bring everybody to plans.
Perfect, understood. In regards to the signs, as part of our findings, I see, you know, in the staff report it talks about the sign permit. And the, the new sign, the new wall sign on the Reservoir Street frontage is not currently existing. I did do a site visit, by the way, for disclosure. As part of our actions today, are we approving that sign permit and that wall sign, or is that something that you guys are doing ministerially?
That was ministerial. Here are the informations to be substantially consistent here forward.
Excellent, thank you.
Just a quick question, follow-up to Commissioner Carter's first question. Pierre, if the applicant had come to the city in advance to get the required permits for the signage and the occupancy change, would this have to come, have to come to commission for the signage component, or would it not? Because it could be done ministerially.
It would have come before the commissioner as a site plan review.
Okay.
To the change in occupancy from, from office to retail.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Commissioner Smith, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lever?
No questions, thank you.
And I have no questions at all. Well, I have one question of staff which will make more sense later. Approaching Reservoir Street from Main Street, there is an appropriate directional sign, wrong way, I think, it's, or something similar. And it's almost, not quite, but almost right in the middle of that large white wall on the western side. And so Pierre, and for reasons that'll make sense later on in the meeting, just note that I may ask you to check with transportation to see if possibly that sign could be moved closer to Main Street. So, and we'll talk about that a little bit later on.
Thank you, we can certainly pass that along to Public Works.
Great, thanks. So with that, this is a public hearing, is, if the applicant is in the audience, this is an opportunity for the applicant to come and approach the commission if you'd like to speak at all about your project, and the commission may have some questions, so I invite you to approach the podium. And we don't bite, generally.
And you don't bite?
We don't bite.
Hello. Do you want to ask me questions? I think the only thing I heard that was concerning was moving the one-way signage closer to the street, which is right where I was proposing to put my sign.
Oh, gotcha. Well, would your sign, would your sign be at that level or above it?
Probably the same. The picture that I took of the side of the building.
Oh, I see. I didn't have, I neglected to see this, I'm looking at it right now, I see what you're saying. Okay, fair enough.
There was a sign that was, was the, was, so.
All right. Well, then let me, let me reveal the mystery, since you may not be here when I was going to reveal it later. And it has to do with the arts project and public art project that the city is engaged in and that I've been asked to be a member of. And one of those projects are wall murals. And, and this wall strikes me as being a wonderful opportunity for a mural, for public art, right? And then I just happened to notice that directional sign, it's like, wow, it's right there in the middle of the canvas, if you will. However, I understand, completely understand your desire to put, where you're going to put your sign, so we can, not necessarily pull that item, but I understand the considerations, so I get it. I'll pull, pull my comment for now. So, sorry, I didn't mean to stretch you out on that.
That's okay, not stressed, but lots of people have mentioned to me that I should do a mural on that wall. I was told that a mural has to be for the betterment of the city as opposed to the betterment of the business.
Yes, well, if you did it, if you did it for the, if you did it for the business, it would become a sign.
Right.
So then it would be subject to sign regulations, and, and you'd have to work with staff in terms of how much square footage you could have. But I would, I would, I'd offer, I'd offer this for your consideration. A mural on there, a public art mural, that wouldn't necessarily be one of your design, right? But, I mean, you could certainly offer ideas, but wouldn't be specific to your business because it'd be a sign. But any public art might attract people to your sign, and then, you know, technically you could be benefit from that, you know, in that respect. But, yeah, and I don't know, Pierre, if you have any comment on that. But if it, if it's a public mural, then it's got to go through a public approval process. The city is kind of working on, we've engaged a consultant to work with us on various forms of art throughout the community.
I would just add that under the current regulations, the, the property owner or owner of the building is permitted to put up any mural that they wish at their discretion. And as you correctly stated, as long as the mural does not become a sign, so it's advertising the business, they can put up a piece of art, they can cover the entire wall, there's no, there's no discretion on the side of the city.
Oh, well, there you go. So I did, something I didn't know, so have at it. Maybe you could even incorporate that directional sign.
I do have a question.
Good. If you could pull them, yeah, thank you.
If it was a city mural that was to the benefit of the city, something historical or such, how long would that process take to get approved? Because I don't want a sign, no sign to be there for three years because it takes three years to get approved.
It's, I would say that it's early in the process, the city is engaged with the Eldorado Arts and Culture. They actually have hired a art consultant that does public art plans for cities and municipalities. So, now, I'm making an assumption, but the city would not compel or force a mural onto a property. I mean, the, the city may be looking at its own buildings or its own property, but it would work in conjunction with the property owner, so there'd be public discretion, it would be the owner's discretion as well.
Gotcha.
To dissipate.
So, so that wall is yours. That wall is yours, and you can go ahead and start on it whenever, you don't have to wait for us. I would work with staff, if you have any ideas, work with staff, so that you don't, it doesn't become a sign, it remains a mural, in which case then you don't have any limitations in terms of, of size, right? Whereas a sign specific to your business, you're subject of the sign ordinance, but other than that, you, you don't have to wait for us, so that's up to you. That's your wall.
I just had one question, I guess for.
It's the owner's wall. It's the owner's wall.
I just had one question, I guess for staff, that might be academic, but let's say on the side of that building, you have a wonderful whimsical mural of, let's say, children or animals playing with kitchen appliances, pots and pans, utensils. That's art. It's kind of fun. It's not a sign, is it?
I would not consider that a sign.
So again, the advice is, I would, I would double-check, when you get a design, just double-check with staff.
I'm not sure I want to do a mural.
Okay.
Thing that my space is very hidden from, you know, the street, you can't see it until you get well past, well, towards the end of the street, so.
Right.
I'm hoping to use it for signage. If, if I wanted to shrink the size of my sign and put it above a mural, would I have to change, would I have to do anything different to my sign permit?
Square footage. It should really be square footage at the end of the day, isn't it, Pierre?
At this moment, it's hard to say. It's really hard to say whether the sign, you know, the mural and the sign becomes, let's just say, meshed and become one, and then we would look at, we would measure the square footage of the entire area. But I would have to see a description, a drawing.
Commissioner Carter, you have questions?
Yeah, I'm glad, I just wanted to, you're Ms. Lovitsky, the tenant, right? Not the, not the building owner, correct? Okay, cool, just, just for clarity, I didn't hear, I didn't hear your name earlier, I apologize. I appreciate your letter, thank you for that, it's in the record. It answered all the questions that I had, and I definitely encourage you, that, that signage right there will be a good benefit for you, and that wall is just, it's kind of ugly right now, so I'm looking forward to having something on that wall, so.
Design for a sign that is not only informative, but is going to be very beautiful.
Excellent, I'm looking forward to it, thank you.
Commissioner Smith, questions?
Just thank you for the business, it's nice to see Kitchen Supplies back on Main Street.
Yeah, echo that.
You have a couple shops.
Commissioner Lever, questions?
No, just to echo everyone else, that I think your store looks really nice, and the signage looks nice, and I do think that that will help to draw people down towards that end of the street, which I think is wonderful, so, thank you.
I have nothing else to offer, it's been said. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this project? It is a public hearing.
Yes.
You may sit down. All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public, oh, somebody wants to speak? Go ahead, please.
I was just not raising my hand high enough. I'm John Secora, one of the property owners. I just ask that, it sounds like wheels are in motion already for your mural?
No, wheels are not in motion for any murals anyway, anywhere, and per the discussion, the property owner has discretion with regards to their wall, so it's, it's up to them. But the city is looking at how it can bring public art in a variety of form, not just paintings, but sculptures and interactive, whatever, throughout the city and generally on public property.
Those property owners, we've long since thought about putting a mural up, but not wanting to interfere with the business that was down there. We've gone through an art studio, now Action Properties, and now a great kitchen store. And hiring to bring in customers from all over California, not just Placerville, so it's a real boon to the community. And if we can enhance that, all the better. But if like minds get together, you have a group who's already looking at locations for murals, I'm assuming you're looking at, you've got some ideas of what kind of murals you want. It may work, combine all those thoughts together, I'd like to look at that before the ship sails, but we don't want to look at it for too long because she didn't get her sign up.
Oh, no, 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 don't, don't wait on the sign whatsoever. This city project is just starting, and it's, I would say it's probably two years out before anything is finalized in terms of regulations and, and process and all that sort of thing. So you own that wall, you have a canvas right now, you're, the only restriction you have is, you know, mural is different than a sign, if a mural becomes a sign, then you're subject to the sign regulations. But if you keep the two separate, it's not, and that's not to say that as Commissioner Smith offered, the mural could be suggestive of what is inside, right? Without specifically naming the business, therefore, it's not a sign, then you have a canvas you can work with. It's up to you as a property owner.
And I spun off of Mr. Smith's suggestions or comments about combining the two, and obviously saw the smoke coming out of my ears when I'm sitting back there.
All right, I hope that answered your questions.
Appreciate your support of, of the program.
Oh, absolutely, I'm really happy to have you folks on Main Street, thank you very much. Anybody else in the audience wish to comment on this project? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back for discussion and possible action. I think it's, everything looked pretty straightforward to me, and minor code infractions, and I don't even like to use the word, but that's the technical, but action by the commission is certainly corrected. Is anyone in the mode to make a motion?
Second? No, I'll make the motion.
I'll take a.
You have a second pending, I think.
I'll take a stab at the, at the motion here. I would move that we adopt the staff report as part of the public record. I would say that we would find that the project is, is exempt from environmental review from SEQA under guideline section 15303 and 15331, that the project site contains a two-story mixed-use structure that's located within the central business district, that the project request is, is consistent with our general plan land use element goal C, that the project request is consistent with the purpose, intent, and criteria of zoning ordinance 1049 and 10514. The approval is based upon the analysis provided in staff's June 23 report to the planning commission, and that we conditionally approve SPR 2307 based on the project information and findings included in the staff report and subject to the recommended conditions of approval in attachment one of the staff report dated June 20th, 2023.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Yes.
And then Commissioner Smith is second, and just for clarification, your motion also including, included adopting the staff report as part of the public record.
That is correct.
All right, any discussion on the motion?
No.
Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it carries. Just so you know, the public has the right to appeal our decision for 10 days, unlikely, but it's possible, so, thank you very much, and good luck with your project. Okay. And we'll move on then to item 10.2 Site Plan Review. This will be the Hangtown Range Retail addition, consideration of a site plan review request to construct a 2,172-square-foot addition of the east side of the existing Hangtown Range building to be used for retail sales and to relocate existing waste and propane enclosures, install signage above the main entrance to the new addition, and find the project categorically exempt from SEQA. And Ms. Hunter, I believe you have the staff report.
So Site Plan Review 17, additional three elements, for the addition to the 2,172-square-foot addition to the east of the existing structure, remove and reconstruct the existing trash enclosure and propane tank enclosure, and then install signage above the new front entry of the retail addition at the parcel located at 1540 Broadway or Hangtown Range. A copy of the site plan and the proposed new wall sign on the wall behind you, including proposed elevations. They can also be found in attachments two and three of the staff report. Subject parcel is developed for 10,700-square-foot retail in place of entertainment space for archery and gun range. The parcel was used for auto service from 1964 to 2013 under conditional use permit 64-01 for a vehicle tire recapping and brake alignment business. The current structure, elevations, and land use were approved under Site Plan Review 17-03 and Variant 17-01. Regarding the retail addition, the proposed project would result in the addition of a new retail space to an existing structure. The exterior will have the same metal siding, covered entrance, and a storefront door with transom windows, same as the existing structure on the subject parcel. As described in the memorandum provided to you this evening, the existing structure and the location of the proposed addition are within a special flood hazard area as designated by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, or FEMA, that is subject to a 1% annual chance of flood. All new construction within a flood plain or flood-prone area are required to comply with requirements identified in City Code Section 4-9-4C, which requires a new development permit prior to construction in an area of special flood hazard, as well as Section 4-9-5 provisions for flood hazard reduction. The prior planning commission approval for Site Plan Review 17-03 and Variant 17-01 identified necessary parking for the site, requiring a total of two parking spaces for each shooting lane pursuant to zoning ordinance section 10-4-4E3, which identified requirements for indoor recreational uses. The site required 34 spaces and provided 38. As presented by the applicant, no additional shooting ranges are, sorry, shooting lanes are proposed, and a total of 37 parking spaces would be provided. Regarding site signage, as discussed in the staff report, the addition of the second wall sign requires submission of a master sign plan pursuant to zoning ordinance section 10-4-17G1. Each separate entity or occupancy shall be permitted to have two signs with an aggregate area of signs not to exceed two square feet of sign area for each one foot of millennial frontage. Hangtown Range currently has one pole sign and one wall sign, with a total of 113 square feet of aggregate signage. The addition of the second wall sign requires approval by planning commission pursuant to zoning ordinance section 10-4-17H. The addition of the proposed wall sign is within the allowable aggregate area permitted for wall signs, 200 square feet, and within the allowable aggregate area allowed under the sign general regulations. Further, the new wall sign is of professional quality, will be logically placed above the entrance to the new retail addition, and is similar in size to the existing wall sign. The city has reviewed the request and has determined that it is categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA Guideline Section 15301E1, in that the project will include an addition to an existing structure not greater than 2,500 square feet. Moreover, it is the opinion of staff that the project is consistent with the Placerville General Plan Land Use and Community Design Sections, and that the project will result in an addition to an existing building that will be constructed using the same architectural style and that will visually complement the subject parcel. Staff are further of the opinion that, through compliance with the revised condition of approval number nine, the project is consistent with goal C3 of the general plan health and safety element. Lastly, the project is consistent with the goals, purposes, and general requirements of zoning ordinance sections 10-517 and 10-523. As such, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the staff report as part of the public record, adopt the findings in support of SPR 17-03R, including the addition of the recommended additional finding for goal C of health and safety element, and conditionally approve the project based on the findings included in the staff report and subject to the recommended conditions of approval, including the addition of the recommended language for condition number nine regarding construction requirements identified for special flood hazard areas. This concludes staff's report on SPR 17-03R.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter, appreciate your staff report. Questions of staff by commissioners? I'll start with Commissioner Smith, any questions of staff?
I guess the question is about what does this flood plain issue do for this project at this time? Do they have to go back and address that first, or, and come back, or can we go forward tonight?
You can move forward tonight, a lot of this is done with, under the building permit.
This is, it's pretty much an engineering, it's pretty much engineering considerations. But on, on that point, and I, I didn't catch this in the report, the existing structure was not subject to these requirements, correct?
It is.
Only new construction, okay, so there's no retrofit or anything required with that? Okay, so that, that's really good. I mean, this is, this project, the existing proposed is really good use of an otherwise very difficult parcel in an area of the community that it's always great to see in the development, and appreciate that, so, okay, Commissioner Lever?
I just had one question about the trash receptacle. There was the recommendation from Eldorado Disposal about considering for size and the ability to pull the dumpsters safely to the truck. Is that addressed in general? I just didn't see details that, that that squared away, so I was just curious if there was anything we needed to consider tonight, or if it's taken care of.
I believe we have a condition of approval that subjects review an approval of the trash enclosure by Eldorado Disposal. So typically, any project that involves the construction, location of a garbage receptacle, we do send to Eldorado Disposal because of the new requirements for recycling. We want to make sure that everything is adequate and, and to be.
But nothing that we need to specify?
Might be something to ask the applicant, too, because possibly they've had a conversation with Eldorado Disposal, so we can go from there.
Sounds great, thank you.
Commissioner Carter?
Yeah, I just had a question regarding the, the signage. So they're well within their square footage, I don't think it really matters, but the, the door signs, do those factor in as part of the square footage also? I remember that on this, recently, we had that dentist's office where the door signs factored into their total square footage for front, or for their sign permit?
Uh, no. No.
It doesn't, okay. I know they're well within their, their square footage, I didn't think it really applied, but, and then, I guess, yeah, my question was already answered regarding the building official letter, you know, how significant the changes would be, but it sounds like that's going to be handled with you guys directly, so, thank you.
And the chair would note that maker of the motion to please include the required language, it's part of condition, what is it, nine? I think it's condition nine, so, okay, great. Well, this is a public hearing, I'd, if the applicant is in the audience, we'll go ahead and invite the applicant, if they might come forward, commission may have a, a few questions, and, thank you for your project.
Good evening.
Welcome. How are you this evening?
Thank you, thank you. The, the little bit of history on this whole thing is I also own the Mosquito Creek Outfitters there on Broadway and, and Main Street. And when we first opened up there, people would come in and buy firearms and always want to know, where can we go shoot them? So I started looking around for an outdoor range. Well, everything was very expensive, and it was too far out of town, so I kind of put it to bed for a while. And then I was driving down Broadway there and saw this lovely building in its state of disrepair, and full of homeless and other undesirable things. And so I pursued that and considered it to be adequate for, for our needs. And at the time, I thought, well. And at the time, I thought, well, it's only a mile difference between the outfitters and the range, and we don't sell firearms at the range because we sell them at the outfitters. And so we thought that would be an easy transition, especially in a small town like Placerville. Well, it's worked partially, but we can do much better if we combine the two. So that was my original plan. If it didn't work, we'd be able to combine the two. I just didn't know how difficult it'd be. But it's taken about two years or better. I stopped the project once and got stubborn and got back into it. And, you know, and with the approval of the council and the Planning Commission, I think it'll be great for Placerville. We get a lot of people coming in there. We get people from out of town. We get people from out of the country coming in there. That's sort of a little bit of the history of it.
So is, are you going to close Mosquito Creek Outfitters or?
We'll move the firearms and our.
The firearms portion's going to move down there.
Going with the thought of making them outfitters, water sports.
Gotcha.
And kayaking and that type of thing.
Okay. Just when you mentioned Mosquito Creek, and I'd forgotten, the landscaping at Mosquito Creek Outfitters, if you haven't been by, there is excellent. There's a landscaping agreement. There's also a landscape agreement for the existing Hangtown Range, and the applicant has met all the requirements of that, which is really nice, because we have a lot of landscape agreements with a lot of businesses that often go unfulfilled. And I happened to check, and you folks did, you fulfilled your requirements, and I really appreciate that. And so, okay. Who wants, Commissioner Lepa? You have any questions of the applicant?
Nothing, just to make sure that the trash enclosure is squared away and comfortable with.
Yeah, that's, you know, we've got one now with big doors, and they just pull it out, and it'll be, it'll be similar to that.
Great, thank you.
And you're all, you're all good to go with the flood requirements?
Yes.
Yeah, whatever, right? What can I do?
And we've addressed that, you know, earlier, so we'll just have to redefine that.
Okay. Commissioner Smith, any questions?
No questions again, but to commend you because it's a very attractive place, Mosquito Outfitters, and it doesn't matter what anybody's views are about guns, you need to know how to use them and to practice. If you don't, they're especially dangerous.
We get a tremendous amount of people coming in for classes, a lot of first time users, first time gun owners, lots of women, which really makes me happy to see the women coming in there and learn to shoot safely and improve on what they do. It's great.
To get a license in this state as a minor, I had to get a class sponsored by the NRA. It's one of the best classes I've ever had, and the rules stay with you for life. So I commend you.
It's really great. It's, people really love it. We got a great staff.
Commissioner Carter, any questions?
I guess I should, now that I know that you have, that you own Mosquito Outfitters also, I should disclose that I'm, my wife and I are frequent customers of your establishment. I should have asked staff earlier, I'm sorry, I forgot about this, but the sprinkler requirement also on B2 of the building official, is that something that we need to address in our finding, or is that going to be handled through the building permit also?
It will be handled through the building department.
Doesn't need to be addressed in our motion?
So we have the comments from Eldorado County Fire District.
Okay.
And their requirements.
Thank you. And I guess the only other question was the trash receptacle. Is it, do you have plans to keep that parking clear in front of them? Are you just going to assume that it's early in the morning, so not a problem?
They pick up before we're even open.
Okay.
So there's generally, there's almost never anybody there.
Excellent. And I also want to commend you. My wife did a women's only class at your establishment, and she loved it. She spoke glowingly of your staff and of your facilities there, so I want to thank you also for being part of our community. It's wonderful addition.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to address the commission on this item?
I'll take all of them in the audience.
All comers. All right. Well, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, and I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion and possible action. The chair supports the project as presented, and as I said, you know, it's just, it's a good business and a great use of a difficult parcel, so I really have nothing to offer.
I'll make a motion. Let's see, I'm just making sure I have my ducks in order, that I captured what we need to incorporate into item nine, correct, about the flood plain assessment?
Right.
Okay.
Probably straight from what we got from Kristin.
Got it. So I would like to make a motion to adopt the staff report as part of the public record, make the findings as listed on page 10 of the staff report in support of SPR 17-03-R, and conditionally approve 17-03-R based on the project information and the findings of the staff report and subject to the recommended conditions of approval in Attachment 1 of the staff report from June 20th, 2023. And incorporate the consideration to modify proposed Condition Number Nine as stated in the memorandum from staff dated June 20th, 2023.
Go ahead and read that in the record.
Got it. The recommendation being to state that the project is consistent with the Placerville General Plan Health and Safety Section Goal C, and that the project shall be in compliance with City Code Sections 494 and 495, and the California Building Code Section 1612.1. And sorry, the issuance of a building permit is dependent on compliance with the requirements for new construction within a flood plain or flood prone area pursuant to City Code Section 4-9-4 and 4-9-5.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
I will second.
Motion seconded by Commissioner Carter. Any discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposition? Hearing none? Motion carries, four zero. Of course, there is a 10-day appeal process. Someone wants to appeal the action of the body tonight? Unlikely, but just so you know. Okay. Thank you very much.
I'd like to ask a question. Big wall, and I think it'd be a great place for a mural. Is there any plans for the city to help pay for that or anything like that, you know?
Well, as part of the arts project, the city will be looking for grant funding. In terms of direct dollars being allocated, I'm not aware of any. I don't know if Pierre knows of any, but I think we are going to pursue grant funding for those purposes.
Yeah, because I've got a big long wall.
Oh, terrific. Terrific. That'd be great. Yes. Yes. Thank you for asking. Okay. See, next item on our agenda is continued item, item 11.1. We're going to open this item, but then note that the applicant has requested a continuance to our July 18th meeting. So we'll go ahead and open that item. And any members, I'll open it up to the public for public. Do I need a staff report? I don't think I need a staff report. If this, go ahead, Kristin, sorry.
I can give a few.
Oh, so no, oh, I will not, I do not want to take away your time. Go ahead, please.
Script and everything.
Go ahead, please.
So SPR 23-05, request from the applicant to replace 12 wood windows with vinyl, paint the exterior siding, gutter trim and door, and replace exterior lighting fixtures on the existing single-family residence located within the Cedar Veen Historic District, just as a refresher. The public hearing for the project was held on April 18th, 2023, and the Planning Commission continued the item to this evening's meeting in order to provide the applicant time to procure and provide to staff three bids for window alternatives in order to support a finding of economic and feasibility for wood rather than vinyl. On June 15th, 2023, the applicant requested an extension to the next Planning Commission meeting, July 18th, 2023, in order to complete the procurement of bids.
Thank you very much. Questions of staff? Go ahead.
I was just curious if they were aware of our discussion at the prior meeting and the outcome of our decision around this very similar.
Yes.
Yes.
Director Rivas made a special call the morning after the meeting.
Oh, fantastic.
I thought that might have been the case, but I was hoping so as well.
Yeah, great.
Yeah.
Great. And maybe that'll solve their issue and for us as well. So we'll see what they bring back to us. So any other questions of staff? Thank you for that report. This is a public hearing. I'll open it up to members of the public. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please come forward. Form a line. All right, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close that. The request is to continue the item to the meeting in July 18. Is that one of us? July 18. I guess we'll just take a motion to take that action.
Motion to continue the Site Plan Review 23-05 to the July 18th, 2023 Planning Commission meeting.
Second of the motion.
I will second.
Commissioner Carter seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposition? Seeing none? We will continue it to July 18. Thank you. Okay. We have no new business this evening. That brings us to item 13 matters from Commissioners and Staff. Staff reports, 13.1.
Thank you, Chair. Nothing really to add, other than we are diligently continuing to work with the project, Mallard and Middletown. We're trying to finish with title, title reports, and so we can secure the loan and provide the money and continue the project forward. So funding looks like it's coming into place. So we're hoping that they can get their rough rating permits issued hopefully by the end of the month, and then hopefully we're looking at construction starting hopefully within the next couple of months.
Okay.
The next Planning Commission meeting will be canceled. It falls on July 4th, so.
Oh, correct. Yep. All right. So our next meeting is July 18. Yep. Fantastic. Anything else from staff? Very good. Then Planning Commission matters, we'll start with 13.2.1, Special Committee Report from our Historic Review Special Committee. Handed out a bunch of very important documents earlier.
Well, the reason we keep going back and forth at each session is because we have no hierarchy. It's a team, and it's coordinate responsibilities, so that's why we switch on you every meeting. But I did have a package for you, and I made copies available to the staff for our fire representative.
You gave me something.
Mr. Vaz.
No, it's right here.
On the proposal for updating our historic resources inventory, Commissioner Carter and I have worked tirelessly for a long time, especially the last couple of weeks. We'd planned to present a formal written material for you to summarize what we had done, but we were taken by surprise late last week when although it was on the agenda or to have been on the agenda, we were learning late last week that it was not on the agenda for action. So as a result, we had to scramble around, find out what happened, why, and respond accordingly. But what I've done is to help you prepare some ideas for what the issue is and how to respond. I guess to begin with, I would explain that Commissioner Carter and I are both members of the Heritage Association of Eldorado County, one of the oldest historic groups in town. The idea that we have dual roles is not unusual, any more than Commissioner Friend working with the Arts Council on another project of great significance in the community. And because our code outlining the responsibilities of the Planning Commission describes our work in coordination with historic preservation groups, all kinds of public interest groups, and those in the business community as well. So the need to update this should be obvious for anyone who's looked at it, but to help you consider, I wanted you to know for background what we've done. First of all, we've talked to a great many people in the academic community, all the universities in this area, reaching out to those in the history departments. One of my best and longest friends is the former president of the Faculty Senate at Georgetown in Washington and a professor of history. So that's one resources. But locally, there is at Sac State, I've found, and it's very hard to find people because they don't list their phone numbers on purpose. They don't want students, prospective students in the public calling them. But what I've found is that at Sac State, they have a person, one of the professors is specifically designed to work with graduate students, to help them be, in effect, a matchmaker, connecting students who are working on a thesis with the thesis topic and a project. And that's just up our alley, because both of us are fiscally conservative. We don't like wasting money, especially taxpayers' money. You're going to get a lot more bangs for your buck if you use a graduate student. So what I've done for you is, and of this exhibit, which marked number one, the first example from our own historic inventory is the Blair House. Everybody knows the Blair House. And what you're looking at is a sample of the kind of format that's used on almost every inventory we looked at. And if you want to back up our research, it's very simple. You just do a browser search using terms like historic resources inventory or historic properties survey, and you'll find hundreds, as we did, and got bleary-eyed looking at them. They all have distinctive similarities, and this is going to be a sample of one. Now, the first one is one that, again, we all know, the Blair House. But I'm directing your attention to the second one, and I purposely blocked out the name of the property because it's someone who's prominent. I didn't want to, while it's a public document, violate their privacy and having people knock up on their doors. But someone who, a couple who came to this town long ago because they were, fell in love with the charm of the historic nature of the town and this particular house. So look at how sparse this is. It's one page. This is embarrassing, and this is not uncommon. So I, and here you have an important house that's named after a family name, but you see in here, there's two different family names. We don't know which one. We don't know when it was developed. So there are other samples, for example, in Napa and Los Altos. They will go on for at least two pages, and then when it comes to text material, it's at least a fourth of the page, often one-third to one-half. And it reads like a short story of coherent sentences that will tell you the history of the building. The other document that's attached is a review of the outline of one other survey. I believe this one's Chico. I don't expect everybody to read this right now, but it's just to give you an idea of the format that's used. They're all very similar. When you look at hundreds of them, as we have, you can see a repetitive nature of them. It largely changes over some minor details that are added. And they will often ask for who was the builder, the contractor, and who was the architect? And because they're old buildings, that's often blank. So this next one is just a good sample of how they put it together and how ours should look. So that's to help give you some questions. I will explain that Commissioner Carter appeared before the city council as the last session in his capacity as a member of this committee, and outlined the reasons for a need to update a document that's now nearly 40 years old, and was described in the very beginning as being just a stab in the dark, oh, a start, and not complete. So I was told by the city manager that this was going to be a workshop and didn't have to be the final answer. So we were using our three minutes, and I, on behalf as president of the Heritage Association, described the project that we spearheaded last in 1984-85. So the idea is we would come back, and we wanted to ask you for what you thought, for what you consider, because you folks and the other two members of you that are here have worked with this longer. You've seen how often this document comes up, and all the questions that appear as to which building needs to be demolished and which ones worthy of salvaging and all the rest. So you're in the business to figure out whether we should have this kind of project and so what kind of funding. Now, just to talk about money for a moment. That's always important. The money that we get from the city, as we did in 1984-85... That's always important. The money that we get from the city, as we did in 1984, 85, is seed money. It's a matching grant. If you don't have anything, there's nothing to match. So if you take the $5,000 that came from the city in 1984, and you look at tables that do calculations on the cost of living, the value of that now is $16,000. And by the way, if you want to look at value, that works out to about $2 a day, which makes us a very valuable product. Now, a couple of concerns that were casually expressed because after all, this is just going to be comments from people as they're hearing it for the first time in three minutes. One was, it's going to take a lot of money. Well, again, you're going to get more bangs for the buck if you use a graduate student. And I'd love to tell them all the things that, yes, please.
So was that, was that feedback from the council?
Yes.
That was feedback from the council. Yeah.
I don't know if you watched, but I'll, I'll give you a recap if you.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll pull it up now. Now that you brought it to my attention, I will pull it up to review.
Well, uh, Michael Sargosa, uh, a strong supporter of historic preservation, raised a couple of issues. One is unfunding. It needs to be done. Question was, was, can this be done in a year? Well, we didn't have a chance to present to him the methodology and the idea of using grant money. If you went out and hired a consultant, yeah, you're talking about big bucks. No doubt about it. But we're not asking for any more money that's been used for a lot of other things, like 50,000 for the Chamber of Commerce to do promotion of city businesses during the pandemic, for example. Or when someone came in and asked for $5,000, yes. But that's just to give you an idea. That's why it's been done.
Couldn't grad students be used to actually write grants? I mean, I mean, that, that.
You are absolutely right.
That's, that seems to me to be a bang for the buck right there. Find, put grad students on grant writing project.
You want them to do that. Why? Because why they're doing this is to develop marketable skills. And in the academic community, what better skill than you can have in writing grants?
They may have to know how to write grants forever, you know.
I'll tell you how I learned about this subject in a very odd way.
Yeah.
I've been on boards of directors at various times for the last 50 years. And the last one was at John Mouse Moss Foundation, who authored the Freedom of Information Act. So I was at a big conference on the First Amendment. I constantly was stopped and asked for money. Why? Because my name tag said foundation. Everybody that whole weekend was looking for money. And one of the tips I got is they always said, ask for more than you want. If you need, if you've got somebody that's going to cost you 20,000, no, no, ask for 45,000. You're going to get more reception from a foundation giving out money if you've got a larger project. So the answer is, to, to our friend, Michael Sargosa, is we've got a better chance that if you start off with giving us some money, because you're going to get a better chance of getting more bucks. And as for the idea that this is going to be ongoing, look, what item in a budget is complete? Every year, we look at roads and updating the roads and upkeep. So upkeep for something that's so valuable as the historic registry of the capital of the mother lode, a valuable tool.
I'll, I'll be quick on the, on the materials that I gave you guys here. So that, that first stapled packet is our, uh, inventory as it currently stands. Um, it's pretty self-explanatory. And then I, I gave you a couple of examples. As you can see, there are hyperlinks on the right-hand side that you can click for each property to get additional information. So I included two that I selected at random. One of them happened to be the same one that that Kirk had unbeknownst to me. Um, but you can look at the, the kind of, um, information that you can get by clicking on that hyperlink on our current, uh, inventory. Now, one thing I thought, I also thought was interesting is that we have a second inventory, and that is a historic marker inventory. And, um, I think one of the issues that we are going to try to address is I, I just gave you one example. On the very first page, the second item on this, um, marker inventory is the B Bennett House at 643 B Street. Used to be Sequoia Restaurant. And so I included, uh, attached to that, the description from the, um, historical marker database website that goes through and gives a really great, uh, history of this property and speaks to the fact that it's one of the oldest preserved homes in Plasterville, very well known. Um, but if you look at our historic inventory, it's not on there.
Right.
And so, um, there are, there are glaring, uh, issues that need to be addressed, obviously. But, you know, we really wanted to give you guys some more information, kind of what of the things that we're looking at. It's pretty nerdy. Um, but, but there is nerd tourism. And that, you know, that also factors in to this is that there are, you know, the, the city wants to bring people to the town to spend money, obviously. And this is part of our, um, part of our tourism industry. And so this stuff is important in that regard also. And so, um, yeah, so that's what we, you know, are, have been working on. Uh, we've realized through this process that there are a lot of, it's not just cities like Los Angeles and the, the ones that are, I'm sorry, uh, Los Altos, I believe, that, that Kirk mentioned. There are cities right in our backyard that are eating our lunch on this, um, that if you walk down their main street, um, their signage, their, the historical markers, the, um, the, the sense of the history of the place is so pronounced. And we don't have any cohesive, um, street front history feeling in this city. And I, I think that's something that can, that can be addressed and really benefit us and, and direct some of those people that are going to our neighbors now for that historical tourism that are not visiting here because there's no cohesive, um, map or walking plan or things that we can develop in the future. But that's kind of where we're going. And so we're just realizing, uh, through this journey that, that a lot of our neighboring cities are really eating our lunch on this and we will, we, we want to be competitive. So that's kind of where we're at.
I think that's really an excellent, uh, observation, um, one that wasn't readily apparent to me, but I can see, um, you know, Plasterville's unique to me anyway. Uh, it still is a working town, right? But it's a working town with a lot of history. And so it, it maintains historically its, its working environment. And, and while it's, it's in the modern era, it, it's still, you can trace its working ethics all the way back historically. Um, and so it's, it's kind of an interesting juxtaposition. I do think there's a lot of opportunities missed, but I think you're uncovering a, a lot of those. So do you have more to add to this, Commissioner Smith, or?
Only to point out that Commissioner Carter is correct. Other communities do list, uh, features such as, uh, businesses, uh, historic features, not just buildings. For example, um, a- and also homes. So, uh, we, we have a plaque, uh, past I've before. And I approached the couple who were here last week. By the way, I recognized them. I just couldn't place them right away. Uh, Mrs. Foley, you know, her father was the city attorney years ago. But I, I went over and talked to them and asked them why they made reference to the idea that our house is not historic, when they clearly love their historic building. And their answer was, it's not in the registry. And I showed them the sign that was used for Market on Main. What would they think of having a sign like that for their place that detailed the history, obviously in a public easement where they wouldn't have people knocking on their door? And the answer is, they'd love it. Last example is, uh, at the city council meeting, some staff made reference to a parking lot and called it the, uh, I think it was the Old City Hall Parking Lot, which caught me by surprise because I didn't know it's such a structure. What they were referring to is the WS Kirk Courthouse Parking Lot. That's the official name. That's why it was named. Nobody knows that that's where the first automobile dealership in Plasterville was located and that the daughter of the dealer drove a car up, up the courthouse steps to prove to these suspicious buyers that that newfangled thing could go anywhere a horse could go. So that kind of sign is an illustration of providing meaning to something. And the last example is, we have so many signs and they're not authentic. So people get misinformed. And the best example is the Hangman Street buildings, two signs that are both horribly inaccurate. Uh, one talks about lots of pe- people being hung there. Nope, sorry. Only one incident. And they refer to vigilantes when the term in 1850s meant a posse. So our signs that have been put by the Historical Society, another person we reviewed with and consulted was the, uh, the, the manager and the director of the historical, uh, museum for the county, uh, who went through the archives and gave us the original materials used for 1889.
That's interesting. You know, the other thing, Commissioner Lepper, if you please jump in. The other thing that occurred to me, and I'm just kind of guessing here, and you mentioned some of these other communities, perhaps we, because we live in a historic area, uh, we're on the, uh, the, the, the Golden Highway, Highway 49, the historic area of gold discovery and all that, you know, perhaps we almost kind of take some of it for granted. Some of these other communities that are so urbanized now, right? They've realized that, oh, you know, we actually have some old history. Before it was all of this, we used to have this and, and are trying to recapture some of that. And, um, so they put an emphasis on it. Uh, well, I mean, I think this work is, is amazing. Uh, Commissioner Lepper is going for her microphone, so.
Echo, echo that to say that thank you so much for presenting these and for all of the work that you guys have done. It's been really incredible and, um, really speaks to a lot of the ideas that I've developed in my time being on the planning commission and living in Plasterville of being more cohesive and more, um, vis- more present in the way that we present our historical, um, assets as well as priorities. And a lot of the things that you guys have addressed, um, fall right in line with what I've both desired and contemplated about ideas for enhancing our historic resources, um, including getting external funding for it. I was a grant writer for a long time. And so I totally agree that having a resource started, uh, makes your case a lot stronger for people to contribute. And, um, it's all about knowing where to go and who has the funding. There's a ton of resources out there. And so if we can deploy certain individuals, ourselves, um, our assets, well, I think we could absolutely come up with the money, which I agree is not an ongoing overwhelming cost that would be worth the investment for our city, um, for an update and more comprehensive, uh, inventory of things. So I really do appreciate all of this because you can just see that it's scattered and inconsistent with what is, is available to us. And so I, um, I just commend your guys' work and also really look forward to our discussion and really enhancing, uh, our conversations with city council around this topic.
Maybe you should lead a special committee of one to help us find grant writers.
I wish I had my resources of access to foundation centers still, but, um, there are plenty of ways to find it. And, you know, once you kind of unscratch that surface, you end up finding other foundations, really one-off things. And I'd be happy to help with this. I'd be more than happy to do that. Um, but you find that there are a lot more and, and it adds up too. You find a $2,500 grant here, you get $1,000 here, 5,000 here. It adds up. And so, um, I think we actually could really get a substantial amount of money if we put the, the legwork in to look for, um, people who prioritize this. And it doesn't enough to be just local people. I mean, there, it's all over. And so I think that there is a lot of opportunity here to get the resources that we need. When you said it's nerdy stuff, I'm a nerd. So it's like, you know, I'm totally understanding that it is appealing and it is possible. And, um, digging into this, I really do appreciate all of this because it.
Mr. Chairman, here's what I wanted to ask you. We'd planned for action item because, uh, Commissioner Carter and I never intended to usurp the responsibility of all of you. It's a collective responsibility. It's your decision. He had the authority, as you directed, to speak on his behalf for the committee. I obviously had my capacity to speak, but we didn't have the capacity to speak for you. Our intent was to present the facts and the reasoning to you, get your views, and ask you for action. This body has several options. You can each write letters to the council individually. You can pass a resolution tonight. Now, the Brown Act has an issue about three days. Sue me. You know, if that responsibility, we, we relied on representations made to us twice to have it on the agenda. If it's not here, you know, I will implicitly say it's here because that's what we relied on. In any event, a simple resolution that says why we feel it's important, it's, if you don't ask, nothing happens. But if you, and, and that means nothing's going to happen for probably a year.
I think, um, just my visceral reaction to that is I would certainly be in favor of a, of a resolution. But if we're going to do a resolution, I would want it to be one that is, uh, well thought out, um, and articulated and it, and, uh, uh, we know exactly. So the action, one action, of course, would be resolution. Um, and nothing precludes us from writing letters individually to, uh, the council. But I think it's better if there's one letter and everybody signs it. I think it's probably a better way. It, it makes more sense to me. And that probably gets us to a resolution. So I, I think my, my request on this would be, uh, for you and Commissioner Carter, perhaps work with staff to begin, uh, and you probably, between the two of you, could probably get pretty close to crafting a resolution, I would think. Uh, I think you already have in your mind what it is you'd like to see. And something like this, I would want, uh, agendized for the public and we would want the, uh, Historical Society and the Heritage Found- I, I think getting some other groups to come and speak in favor also helps add more weight and gravitas to it, as opposed to us doing it very quickly and impromptu here. So don't take that in any way to diminish. I'm trying to think strategically in, in, in terms of how would this have the, the biggest impact to council? And now you already have some sense from council as to what their concern. Now, generally, would you say council generally was, they were acknowledging, yeah, this is something we need to do. We need to do this, but, right? Was it kind of like that? Is that kind of what it was?
Absolutely. And I think, um, you know, specifically Kirk was speaking to a proposal from, specifically from the Heritage Association. And I was just speaking in favor as a member of the, of the committee in general. Um, the overall feeling from the council that I get, especially, um, of late, has been that this, that historical preservation i- is gathered, is gaining steam. Um, it's becoming a priority for the city on, I think on all levels is kind of the impression that we get. Um, and, uh, so yeah, I, I think that overall positive, this is the direction. And obviously we're doing our, our, our joint, uh, meeting, which will be very important in this process also. Um, we were really hoping to kind of get farther down the road on this part of it before that meeting. And there still may be time to do that and we'll work with staff on that. Um, but, you know, I think August 29th is, is the tentative date, uh, as of right now for that joint meeting. So we'd like to get some kind of, uh, of a resolution or support from the commission as a, as a whole before that.
By our next, so we have one meeting between now and then.
The, the council meets, doesn't it meet next Tuesday?
No, July 4th. There's no meeting.
The council does meet, but we don't meet again until.
Oh, the council itself.
We have, we have.
Yeah.
We have three meetings between now and the proposed date of our, our meeting with city council.
Oh, is it? It's August. It's August.
It'll be one July meeting and two August meetings.
So I mean, I, it would certainly be.
Plenty of time.
Yeah, you certainly have.
Yeah.
Just to let you know, I did talk to the Heritage, uh, obviously Heritage, but the Historical Society, uh, met with the president. Uh, she expressed interest, but getting her to come, different story. And I actually met with the board of directors of the, um, El Dorado Gold 1848. Uh, they expressed an interest in it, loved the idea. Hey, it's about time we got money, but didn't come after email and email. There just can be passive people, but if you don't ask, you're not going to get the help. And I, you're strategically correct.
If we have a resolution that we're going to act on, then you can say that the commission is going to hear, uh, a resolution on this topic and is going to take action on it.
Might carry more weight.
It'd be really great to have you attend and, and weigh in and maybe write a letter of support. So that's, 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 and I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring up something similar, uh, when I get to my comments for this evening. So something like that. Uh, you know, going back to markers, you know, we had this, we had a demolition of Cedar Ravine about two years ago. Um, and it was a building, uh, that's not in the historic registry. Um, I disagreed with some who thought the building had no historic significance and the fact it was in horrible disrepair and had undergone multiple remodels. So it really didn't look like much. But at one point, there was an opportunity to get a marker placed right at the corner of Cedar Ravine. And I can't remember what the other street was. Um, it's right, right up here.
Victor Lane.
Thank you. And it would have been, you know, okay, we're, we're going to lose the building. But as people walked by, there could have been something right there in the ground that could have marked. We, 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 I think we, there was a chance to do that. And to me, that's still opportunity lost. And we, we should be looking for those opportunities. And I And we should be looking for those opportunities, and I agree with you that the markers are just as important, you know, as the official historic inventory, the registry. And there are other areas, like my neighborhood, Bungalow Terrace. I mean, that Bungalow Terrace is one of the oldest neighborhoods in Placerville, okay? I won't even tell you what some of the deed restrictions were back in the day, in the 1925, okay? You can just kind of gather for yourself. But there are some other areas that they aren't part of the historic district. I'd like to even see the city revisit, maybe expanding historic districts. That would give us some protections, frankly, from some of the requirements and demands out of Sacramento. That's one of the ways you can preserve your community. And I think we have yet to see the results of the legislation that's come down in the last couple of years. Commissioner Carter?
I appreciate that, and there has been a lot of work already done in that regard that has kind of stalled. A lot of that groundwork has already been laid, the baton can be picked up and run with, and I just want to say, I appreciate you guys indulging us. It's good to have more nerds in the group, right? But we appreciate you guys indulging us in having this conversation, because it's important, and I'm glad that we have the ability and the opportunity to make this more of an issue in the city and hopefully get some progress in this regard. So thank you, guys.
And to your point about that demolished property, I believe, if I remember correctly, part of the issue about the acknowledgement of it was requiring that on private property, which I think will be another thing that we can address where we aren't imposing on people, but we are recognizing the areas. I've proposed before the idea of putting signs at the entrances of the historic districts, which goes in line with what you're talking about, to actually let owners know, to let visitors know, to really acknowledge that we have and appreciate and value our historic districts, and why that is, and make it seem more cohesive of a district rather than, as you've described, and as we see, is just kind of a spread-out, loose, here's one document here, and here's one idea here, and, you know, and really make it a cohesive and comprehensive, which I also agree with the resolution being crafted over time so that it is a strong and powerful document that really does encompass everything that we would like to see, so.
Okay, excellent work. What would you consider your next steps to be then? To work on a resolution then?
Given the timeframe, because I admit that I was an error, I kept working on the idea that it was next week. So, and you're right, the next step needs to be a resolution, and to prepare it as soon as possible for your consideration with staff. So we have a good, solid project, and then solicit some discussion. I guess I'd lastly ask my gratification, because we, speaking for myself, had no idea what our colleagues would think. And it's very gratifying to see the same sensitivity to this matter and the desire to come up with some solutions. Thank you.
Well, I've been totally supportive, not only of this topic, but also of setting up the special committee, and I think you've really proved the value of such, and you've just kind of really scratched the surface. So, kudos to you guys, too. And then on that resolution, Pierre, I presume there's some sort of a, probably a template of sorts, and that we need to follow the wherewith and what-for and whoever and why, you know, and so there's a format that can be used to put that in the proper form?
We have plenty of examples.
Okay, terrific, terrific, okay. Any other commissioners have comments for staff or other commissioners? I have several. One, as was mentioned earlier, the city has engaged a consultant to work on an arts and culture approach for the community, to look at how we can create more art within the community, which is not just murals, but also statues and interactive and placement of elements that speak to the history and provide art within the community. We had our first meeting, I was on there with Kathy Lishman, former commissioner, council member, and mayor. It was really great to actually be working with Kathy, and there was another gal on there, her name was Deborah, Deborah, I can't remember where she's from, Eldorado Cameron Park, maybe? I'm not entirely sure, don't hold me to that, I might get it wrong. The consultant group is, was excellent, and a really fantastic discussion on all the different kinds of things that we could do, and what do we think of Placerville, et cetera, et cetera. And I have to tell you, I know that Placerville has tried, the idea of re-envisioning or remarketing or rebranding, Placerville has come up a couple of times recently. And as happens with me, every so often, I got this amazing epiphany. And I'm not going to tell anybody here what it is, because I'm going to follow my own strategy of talking with some others and building support before I, and also verification too, before I go public with it, but it's just like, well, yeah, this is kind of automatic, but it's, you know, something that, well, why would people want to come here and stay here, right? Of course, we need more lodging, right? We need lodging, okay? That's the one thing that we're hurting on, need lodging. So this project is just getting kicked off, and I will report out as new items come up for the commission's advisement and so on and so forth. The next item I have is I'm going to ask Pierre, when he has some time, talk with him briefly about this, I would like him to review the process the city has for setting our stipend. And it's probably been about 15 years since our stipend was reviewed. Carol Ann Ogden was a commissioner who came on after I was a commissioner, and the first thing she said was, you know, for the amount of brain power that's coming to the table and the work that we're doing, you know, you might want to see even kick in a few more dollars. And so I don't know what the process is for the city, but I'll, I'm going to ask Pierre to maybe take a look at that and maybe look at some similar communities, maybe, I don't know, the city of Jackson, if they're comparable to us, or Nevada City, or something like that, and then bring something back for us to consider and possibly make a request to council. So, that's it. And with that, did you have a comment on that, sir? Yes?
If you don't mind, it's brainstorming, because what you suggested about murals prompted me to think of some considerations that could be looked into, and that's the historic feel for the area. We have the mural of the Snowshoe Thompson. And then some time ago, I don't know whether it was the planning commission, the historic advisory committee or both, that gave approval for a mural on the side of what was then a musical instrument store, and expressly said, "It's up to you. First Amendment, do what you want." And then they finally, and they could have had a mural that depicted musical instruments, which was clever, I thought, but they came up with something that had that historic feel. So if you keep it wide open, you could get graffiti practically or something super-modern. And if you had some considerations for historic themes, it adds to the flavor of the town, and it isn't incongruent with the historic artifice of history. That's just, it came to mind from what you said.
Yeah, and Kathy Lishman has a great phrase, she's used it so many times, something about preserving our past, securing the present and working towards the future, or something along those lines, and, you know, and she's really correct about that. Before I move to adjournment, is there anyone in the audience that has any comments on item 13 matters from commissioners and staff? Go ahead and please approach the podium.
We'd like to make a couple of supportive comments regarding the intent to initiate and start a revision or revisiting of the, our historic resources.
Oh, fantastic.
We may have some ideas for saving some money there, too, which can be a continuation of the conversation. We both actually happen, though, to be part of the Historical Society, we're on the board of the Historical Society. So I did want to also ensure that, Mr. Smith, you knew that we are fully supportive. You mentioned speaking with our resident Jill earlier. I think she did receive your invite, but it was a very short time before, I think you were due to be there, so we regret we couldn't be there, but it was certainly not a lack of intent to participate in that. I also wanted to assert that my husband and I actually have some experience creating these resources and documenting them. We've done that for some of the communities we've been a part of previously, and so we know how to get that done, are willing to contribute our time as well, and knowledge and experience doing that, and of course, at no cost, as a part of our partnership from the Historical Society as well. So if that provides some encouragement, but also some perhaps cost savings, we think we could probably contribute that, if of course you are open to that. Sean, do you have anything to that?
I would just ask these folks, if you don't mind spending a moment, they have the Judge Thompson House on Cedar Ravine.
Oh, fantastic.
And done a wonderful job with it, actively involved in saving Union Cemetery. But you have a great story about Judge Thompson and his granddaughter, if you want to share one of the things they're going to do, but I just found what you did on Main Street recently very helpful.
We have taken a vision for our personal lives, the saved historic resources, and we are committed to that with the Judge Thompson House. It's actually a Blair House. Six, speaking of which, the historical resources have, names associated with several buildings. Example, you mentioned earlier, we're watching you on, sometimes I'm not sure how many people do that, give some credit to your technology team here, who I think cameras, it's made the viewing experience much better. I do notice that the microphone is picking things up very well, by the way.
We were struggling with that at our last meeting, maybe, and the microphone's pretty close to, how about a tap on there?
It's inconsistent.
We'd be glad to continue.
Oh, that's better. Yeah, he just, the gain was turned up.
We'd be very glad to, some of the progress that we're making both towards saving that historic resource and preserving it, but also trying to do that across the community, including our work at the Union Cemetery through the Save the Graves Group, which is led by Mike Roberts, and we're a part of that as well. So we'd be glad to help in any way we can and any form that we can.
That's terrific. So this is a great example of community engagement. All right?
Thank you, guys, very much. You know how difficult it is to get people to show up at meetings for historical stuff, so thank you so much, and we definitely look forward to working with you guys. Thank you.
They must have received the special adjournment we're having this evening, and so I'm going to adjourn this meeting.